Okay, I'm gonna call tonight's city council meeting to order. Will the recorder call the roll?
Yes, Councillor Duggar.
I'm here.
Thank you. Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Here.
Councillor Hassan?
Here.
Councillor Kimmy?
Here.
Councillor Teeter?
Here.
Councillor Tivnan? No. Mayor Beatty?
Yes, Councillor Tivnan emailed me earlier and said she might be late, so we'll have to take a eye out for her on the executive link. With that, the Beaverton City Council is holding an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations, and ORS 192.6602F to consider information of record that are exempt by law from public inspection, and ORS 192.6602H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of the public body with regards to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. The subjects above will be taken one at a time in the order listed, otherwise announced prior entering to the executive session. Generally, members of the media may not attend executive session, however, the news media must not report on information from the executive session. News media is may request a secure link to the virtual Zoom meeting by notifying the city recorder office. With that, we are gonna move into executive session, and there is a separate link for the council. That dog says nobody loves them ever.
I know, huh?
Gives any hugs.
She's been in your office.
I know. Apparently, a lot of people have. It's a thing to go in there and take a photo and send it to me.
My body.
But I do think since Dan's in charge tonight, we need to create a little chaos for him. Seems unfair to have a easy breezy meeting.
We could have the longest meeting. We could have a record-setting meeting.
I would opt for the shortest. Like, let's try that on for size.
Yeah, let's not do the longest. I'm in California.
Well, in fairness, John, I think our city council game is every time you say, "I'm not gonna take that much time," and then monologue for 10 minutes, like, we're gonna have to cut you off.
Okay, that's fair. I, you know, I'm getting famous for doing that.
And Kevin's got a hot date tonight, so we gotta get him out the door quickly.
Yeah, it's our anniversary.
Is it three?
Yeah, three years. Yeah, a long time.
I mean, you know? So do we need?
Happy anniversary.
Yeah. I will be with you guys on my 20th wedding anniversary in June, so let's, um, let's agree when it's someone's anniversary. We'll just go quick as possible. Do we need to come back in? We're in session already? Can we just roll, or do I need to recall the roll?
You are here. You are up on screen, and there are people in the chambers.
Perfect. They heard all of our anniversary dates, so we will expect cards from the community. Okay, we do have two people to testify tonight, to in-person. With that, we are going into the public comment portion of our evening. As a reminder, look, uh, public comment is an essential part of how local government does business. However, in order to help us comply with Oregon's open meeting laws, this is not a time for dialogue. This is a time for us to listen. If follow-up is needed, Dan, myself, or the city recorder will make follow-up happen. I'm sorry, I'm trying to find the list of the speakers. Okay. Um, with that, our first speaker this evening will be Paul Thornton, followed by Brett Francis. Is that who's in the council chambers?
Those are the two people we have in person, and then we have, uh, one who's supposed to join online.
Perfect. Well, we'll take the in-person testimony first. All right, when you are ready, you have, uh, three minutes to address the council.
Hello, councillors and Mayor Beatty. I submitted my testimony last Friday, and I hope you had a chance to read it. Congratulations on your anniversary, Kevin, and everyone else. I don't really wanna be here right now, um, but I have to be here, for my family's business. Thornton Coffee's assumptions are estimates based on the impact of our business and, and, and the impact of how we see this construction project working out. How much it depends on how long this project takes. And we can't plan for the unknown. I've said this before, the coffee shop business is very unique. They have daily visitors that come, who are the staple of their success. We call them our regulars. And there are seven options for coffee in our little neighborhood. I think our customers would put up with it for a little while, but it's a daily event, and they're gonna go find somewhere else. Although there's only one retail shop inside this construction zone, it's the most difficult type of business to deal with. Thornton Coffee isn't an occasional destination for our customers. They're a daily destination, unlike most businesses. Coffee is wildly a necessity for so many people. And you read my letter. I hope you see the challenge that Thornton Coffee and the city of Beaverton has here. For Thornton Coffee, it's not a trust concern. It's a track record and an impact on small business concern as the city goes to work on the street beyond safety issues. It may also be an experience thing. This is the first of Beaverton's first big-street downtown projects in a long time. All new people working on it right now. Regardless of the track record, that track record's a gauge for us. This is likely not a six-to-eight-month construction project. And the risk that it lasts longer is very real. The only other way Thornton Coffee can measure this, the, the track record is by watching. The community can't see the difference between a city and a county project while they're driving around. Like the intersection of Hall and Cedar Hills, by the McDonald's there. It's perhaps the busiest crosswalk in the city of Beaverton. That's been going on for months, and it's not even a whole entire intersection. It's just a one, couple of corners. We ask that this project be delayed until Thornton Coffee moves their wholesale, or the city finds a way to financially support businesses under, under pilot projects. Next week, Rachel and I will be inviting all of the councillors over to meet with us, have a cup of coffee, and we hope that they see what, I hope that you see what, what we see. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Francis, you are up when you are ready to go.
Okay, all right. Uh, my name is Brett Francis. I am the property manager for the two most impacted properties along the proposed Millikan extension. Thank you. The Northwest College Buildings. I am in no way discounting the impact that construction will have on Thornton Coffee. I trust that we can all work together to keep their business flourishing. For this most recent push of the project, it's been four-plus years. I will say the worst years of my life. The project manager, Jean, did whatever she wanted and caused a lot of destruction in my world. I'm a one-man show, and the amount of precious time she took cannot be replaced, nor the damage she caused be fixed. To this day, I still do not see how she was allowed to do what she did. I said it years ago, that if Dan Turk were the lead project manager, things would have been much smoother. Since Dan has taken the lead, we now have a budget-friendly, reasonable project that we all agree will improve traffic and safety along Millikan and not destroy businesses in the process. Dan listens to what we have to say. He understands and is empathetic to our concerns. For the first time, I feel like we are working as a complete team to get this project completed so that everyone benefits. I want to say that I support Dan's Millikan extension proposal and thank him for his process in bringing us all together.
Thank you, Brett. Uh, all right, online, we have James Truilliger.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
So my name is James Truilliger. I'm the Chair of the Greenway Neighborhood Association Committee. Um, I am here in my official capacity as Chair, uh, thanks to a unanimous vote from the last, uh, monthly meeting. Um, the topic that comes to mind at every single Greenway NAC meeting that has existed since, I think, the dawn of time, has been the 125th Avenue Extension. It sits right in the middle of our neck. It is, at this point, one of the few remaining green spaces that exist between, uh, the various living areas that are not the main Greenway Park. And it has been sitting in this bizarre limbo situation for, checks my watch, 53 years. Uh, an attendee at our last meeting called the situation, especially for people who live near this now green space, like living with the Sword of Damocles, because at any moment, if the budget were to suddenly appear, then this wonderful green space could become another arterial. What we recommend as a NAC officially is, let's do something that we are hoping very, very much to do more of, which is, let's let the green space be green space. It is now a collection of significant-growth tree forest, um, and is used as an unofficial bike path and, uh, walking path as a connector from north to south, uh, from Beaverton to Tigard. Um, it has come to my attention that there is some, uh, bond money available for things like trails. We could very seriously consider adding this to our 2026 plan in the active transportation plan, or whatever plan that, that this bond can apply to, to make this an official bike corridor without taking down a single tree. The only people in my entire neck that I have seen who are still in favor of having this extension put through are really only concerned regarding the fairly, uh, just, you know, very large amount of traffic at the intersection of Hall and Greenway. But even in the most costly alternatives that we see for just directing, uh, directly intervening, intervening in that intersection, it's still 100 times less expensive than the estimated cost of putting through this extension. So letting it go is the financially responsible thing to do. It's the ecologically responsible thing to do. It's the community responsible thing to do. So we wholeheartedly recommend as a NAC, now that the transportation, transportation system plan listening period is up, please take this off the plan. We don't need it. We need it more in its current state with its trees, its nature, and its, uh, bike and, and foot, uh, path traffic. Thank you very much for your time.
Uh, thank you, James. I'll agree with two things that you said, that there's follow-up needed. I'm gonna ask the council and council new business to talk about this particular topic. I will also disagree with you, a Sunday that has knocked doors in your neighborhood probably a dozen times, that I don't, I don't think all your neighbors are in agreement with you. But, uh, it was the, the number-one hot topic in my first run for city council, I will tell you that. So, uh, we will talk about it, uh, a little bit in council new business tonight. So thanks for coming and talking with us, and thanks for being an active member of our neck. Um, let's see. Okay, we are on to the consent agenda, and I know, uh, council president asked for 25081 to be pulled for, uh, future conversation. So with that pulling, I will take the consent agenda.
All right, now I move to approve the consent agenda, except AB 25081.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on tonight's motion?
Me. Hi, I just wanted to, um, just mention how excited I am about this city park kiosk lease. You'll see that I had asked some questions about our process for identifying a vendor, and then just thinking through, you know, what kind of food, uh, those vendors serve. So I'm super excited for this, and I do hope that we're able to have future conversations as this lease develops and as we think about how we're gonna use this space. Thanks.
Any other discussion? All right. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, yes, with the comment on the kiosk as well. Um, that kiosk has been incredibly difficult to, uh, keep a tenant over the years. Um, just because it can be very difficult for people to generate sustainable revenue in that location over the course of the year. Um, so I think it's really exciting that we've got an excited tenant right now, who's also got partnership plans with HomePlate. I'm really excited to see where this can go, and I, I think there's some good first steps.
Councillor Kimmy.
Is this where I talk about the social services funding?
No, council president, you asked it to be pulled off of consent, so we'll have a separate conversation about that. We're talking about the rest of consent right now.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. Um, I would also say, uh, this tenant, or this building, has been many, many conversations in the past, but to Councillor Teeter's point, it lacks, uh, a power water source. It's hard to, it's seasonal at best. And so really thinking about how to utilize this. Um, we used to have a second one that no longer exists, so I think the team did a, uh, an excellent job trying to track down a tenant for this and found a great partner. So thank you for activating the space. That was unactivated last summer, and then it was greatly impacted by the two summers of construction at the fountain. So, uh, I look forward to this coming back. With that, will the recorder call the roll?
Um, could we confirm who was the first and second? We had people exiting chambers, so I heard Kimmy for the motion and Hassan.
I seconded it.
I'm sorry, was that Hassan for the second?
Yes.
Okay, Mayor. Um, Councillor Duggar?
Yes.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Councillor Hassan?
Yes.
Councillor Kimmy?
Yes.
Councillor Teeter?
Yes.
Councillor Tivnan?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Beatty?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
Now, council president, we'll have a discussion about the agenda item you pulled.
Thank you so much. Um, I, I know every one of you, uh, probably read, uh, the social services funding and which organizations that it funded. Um, I looked at it more closely than years before because this could be our last time funding, um, organizations who, who directly works with the residents. Um, the reason I pulled it is because I have a little bit of concern about the organizations that we are funding. Um, there's some redundancy in regards to, uh, college prep, um, or helping kids to go to college. And also, um, many of the organizations that we're funding are, not many, but some of them are national organizations, and many of them are not located in Beaverton. They don't exclusively work with Beaverton residents, even though they want to have somebody here to help out. But then the organizations that was left off, uh, I know many of them works strictly with Beaverton residents, and then they've been very active. I cannot name which specific ones. Um, so there's a possibility that the, these funds might go away. Um, uh, I like to fund directly to the organizations who's based in Beaverton priority, and then who works with Beaverton residents secondly, and then greater Beaverton area third. And, um, uh, so that's why I pulled it, and I'd love to have work session regards to this, before we approve funding, if that's possible time-wise. So.
Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Councillor Kimmy, we had a work session, I think, months ago, where we gave the direction of our priorities to the Social Services Funding Committee. And I do believe we did, uh, I, I, I don't recall if we talked about Beaverton specific, but the, the agenda bill outlines the specific priority areas that we directed the funds be prioritized towards, and that's included in it. So, um, I, I would not, um, support having another work session on this because the Social Services Committee did all of the work of vetting all of these applicants and making this recommendation under our priority. So I'm, I'm content to, um, pass it as presented.
Councillor Hassan?
Yeah, um, I'm a little torn. I had had a lot of questions about this agenda bill too, and I guess I'll start with why I had concerns. As someone who particularly this last, well, first of all, I wanna just take a moment and thank the Social Services Funding Committee. I cannot imagine all of the work that it took to review these applications and then try to decide with what little money we have, what to fund and what not to fund. So I wanna commend that work, because it's important and it's critical. In addition to that, as someone in the last five months who's really been, as all of you are, getting increased phone calls around folks who are struggling, folks who need help, folks who have issues, I was concerned to see some of the organizations, because a lot of the orgs that I send these people to, um, were not necessarily orgs that were on this list. So it, I felt very conflicted around how I felt about this particular item, while wanting to, again, honor the work of the Social Services Funding Committee. I will say to Councillor Hartmeier-Prigg's point, when we gave feedback a couple months ago, I, I do think that we emphasized a lot of that, um, and I, and I'm not sure that, I'm not sure how, like, how, how it feel like it really translated in the, in the allocations. Um, I'm open to what other folks think, uh, but I am hopeful that, regardless of what the outcome of this discussion and conversation is, because I do feel, again, this, like, sense of orgs that I know that are taking a lot of phone calls and taking on a lot of, like, emotional labor at no, with, you know, limited funding, that our future conversations are around identifying orgs that are Beaverton-specific that do really resonate with our values that we can partner with and that we can support. So I'm eager to see where the discussion goes. I, I could support this as is, mostly as a signal to support our Social Services Funding Committee members' work. But I do think, and I, again, am eager to hear from you all, as people who are hearing from folks who have trouble with housing, they're calling some of these places and not getting it. And so what are we doing strategically from a policy perspective to make sure the orgs that we're funding are orgs that we can give our community members phone numbers to, to get support? Thanks.
Councillor Teeter?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, I don't wanna have another work session on this, since we did just talk about it in January. Um, I would be open to having a work session on how we are funding outside organizations. We mentioned this a little bit in Budget Committee. Um, I mentioned it to Jenny, the city manager, in our, in my one-on-one with her last week. Um, she mentioned that, uh, this is a topic we can talk more about, I think, this fall. Um, so I think funding outside organizations is a good conversation to have. Uh, we did provide the parameters for the Social Service Funding Committee. Uh, we provided the, the priorities that organizations were using to guide their grant applications. And so I think there's been a lot of work, not just from staff, but from the community side of things, to apply for funding based on the criteria that we set and the projects that fit within those, those funding priorities. There are seven new organizations that have not received funding before, and that was a priority we mentioned in open work session too, about wanting to see some new organizations funded. So I see our comments reflected in this work, and I think I am very comfortable supporting this as it is.
Councillor Tivnan?
Okay, sorry about that. Um, yeah, I agree with Councillor Teeter. I think that it's worth opening up the conversation, especially in, in light of, of what wild times we're in right now in terms of where all of these different types of organizations are trying to find funding and prioritizing ones that have the most impact on local residents. Um, but that being said, with the direction that we gave back in January, the subcommittee did the hard work of going through all of the applications and weighing considerations that we had put in front of them very carefully. And so I'd, I'd like to support the work that they did on this round, and then open it up in the fall to, to decide how we wanna shape this, just given current conditions.
I, I just want us to take a beat here and think about how complicated it is for staff. In last week's Budget Committee, uh, meeting, Councillor Kimmy, at your request, we were, you would let, you wanted us to pull money from the BDA to give to PCC. And in this meeting, you're saying we shouldn't be funding this much school outreach. And this is part of the issue that collectively we have in giving direction to staff. We're all over the place. We had two meetings on this. We've had many conversations about this, and we all kinda do it. It's not an isolated thing, but we're jumping from topic to topic and then asking staff and asking volunteers to, like, make magic happen out of our words. And we're, you know, when I look at this list of who we funded, Adelantes, they're doing family engagement coordinator in Beaverton. Afghan Support Network, which I wish we could fund more, are supporting Beaverton families with all kinds of wraparound services. Beaverton Education Foundation is working on reading and math, the number-one issue of kids not getting through school. The Beaverton Resource Center is providing services for homeless youth. Bridge Meadows has a location in Beaverton that connects foster cares with families, and they have an amazing track record, and they're amazing in the neighborhood. We have immigrant and refugee service provided for specifically black immigrants and refugees to the city of Beaverton. We have College Possible, Aloha High School. Like, maybe we can make an argument that Aloha's not in the city, but their residents are. And this is supporting two America Corps, uh, volunteers that are getting other funding to match the funding we're giving. Dougie Center is supporting mental health, something this council has talked very openly about needing to do. Family Justice Center is serving women that have survived domestic violence. You know, Family Promise of Toallington Valley is hosting in, uh, families, the one thing our sheltering can't do. Um, the Filipino-American Center in Beaverton is working on immigration and labor rights. Homeplate Youth Services is serving young people that are homeless. Our number-one population of homeless, uh, people. Just Compassion is operating our safe program, where the average person using it is a 70-year-old woman. Kinship House, working on mental health. Latino Network, working on urgent needs facing the, the immigrant, uh, community around legal services and immigration. Meals on Wheels, providing meals to our homebound senior. Mercy Connection, rent assistant for African, Afghan, or African refugees. Metropolitan Family Services, that is doing ESL in three different Beaverton school districts. You know, Urban Gleaners, that are taking food and giving it to the, the Food Bank. Social Enterprises, Beaverton's Immigration Relief Fund. Um, the Women Sewing Circle that I've been to, that are, are helping immigrant and refugee women have a space for person-to-person youth contact that operates in every single school. I, I don't look at this list and see it as we're not doing this stuff. I look at the list of who we're not funding and the fact that we can't fund these to their greatest capacity. I have been a critic of social service funding, because I think it's very little money. One of the things that I wanted us to do was move away from Fortune 500 companies like the Food Bank, and this is exactly what the list gave us. So I think for me, this, this list is a great representation of what we've been asking them to do, and I'm challenged, because we're not gonna be able to continue to do this. So I think today, with this list, the work that I know they put into it, I'm gonna happily support us moving this list forward. Okay, Councillor Duggar, did you, did you go? You want your last?
I, I didn't go. I just, and, and I won't repeat everything. I, I do wanna say, like, like, I do think this is a mistake I made in the beginning of being a councillor, is, uh, just looking at the outputs of a list without knowing all the inputs. And I think we have to be really careful. We, we, we've charged the SSFC with doing the work. I have not seen their vetting, other than the, the, the assembly bills and everything. And I, I think, I don't see a reason to override. If we wanna change priorities for the future, that's one thing that we really have to stay in our lane as councillors and be at the, the policy high level, and I, I, I hope we're continuing to move that. So I support it as is, and I, uh, I, I hear you, Councillor Kimmy. And we can talk about that in the future, but I, I just can't do it right now.
I would also say, from our own ethical issues and procurement, we can't get into the details of the funding. The reason it's set up this way is to give us some, some buffer. We approve it. But if we start meddling and moving the list around, it's gonna put us in a, an awkward, it's gonna put us in an ethical position, because a lot of us sit on these boards and have connections to them. Um, so it's just something from our ethics to, to take a look at as well. With that, um, I don't know, someone would like to make a motion?
For Mayor, I move that we, um, approve the Social Services Fund- Mayor, I move that we, um, approve the Social Services Funding Committee recommendation in Agenda Bill 25081.
It's moved, and I'm gonna give it to Counselor Duggar this time. Sorry, Counselor Tivnan, a little, little slow on the unclicking. Uh, with that, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yep.
Counselor?
What happened?
I'm sorry, we could, could you repeat that, please, Counselor Kimmy?
Oh, no.
Okay. Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Your Beatty?
Yes.
I have six yes, one no. Is that correct?
Correct. Counselor Hassan said yep, but that was informal for yes. Shaking it up today. Okay, with that, we are on to our work session this evening, uh, 25087, the revised concept plan for Southwest Milliken Way.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, my name is Dan Turk. I'm the project manager for the Milliken Project. Uh, I also have Carol Hall, uh, from Public Works and Peter Craig from our consulting team KPFF to help me answer your questions. Uh, give me a second. Let me load up my short presentation, and then we're all eager to, to hear from you all. Are you all seeing my screen, please?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to talk to you about the revised concept plan for Milliken. Uh, city plans and policies adopted by council prioritize creating walkable downtown and increasing east-west connectivity for all modes. Transportation investments in Milliken Way would help implement these priorities. Along these lines, we see this project as an unofficial initial stage of the Downtown Loop Project. Thank you for your clear direction on this project. You asked for a new solution along Milliken between Watson and Hall that uses the remaining 8.5 million in Washington County's MSTIP funds, reduces the project footprint, does not require business relocation, and supports businesses during construction. We work with staff from community, from the Community Development Department and Public Works, as well as with key property and business owners between Hall and Watson to develop the revised concept plan. These owners attended three two-hour work sessions and a site visit, and we've had a series of follow-up meetings with them more recently. This pro, the project team appreciates their collaboration. This has really made this a better project. The project team sought to balance existing land use needs with future transportation and redevelopment needs. We utilize concept-sensitive design to limit property impacts while reducing the need for future disruptions to provide these improvements and ensuring the elements, ensuring the elements of the proposed street are largely consistent with city design standards and the adopted complete streets policy. The revised concept plan significantly reduces the footprint from the previous proposal from 93 feet throughout to 77 feet on the west side and 64 feet on the east side. It does so by narrowing sidewalks from 15 feet to 10 feet or to eight feet at the pinch point on the east side. And proposing only one left turn lane at Watts, at the Watson intersection where our traffic study most recommends it. At the same time, the concept plan uses available funding to generate many benefits the community has called for by maintaining dedicated bike space, not sidewalk level cycle tracks, but pavement-level buffered bike lanes. Flex zones are on-street parking throughout, a straighter alignment, and intersection safety improvements, including, uh, rapid flashing beacons, ADA-compliant ramps, bull bouts, uh, and a high, and high-visibility crosswalks. It also, at the Watson intersection, eliminates the slip lane and includes don't-block-the-box striping. The project team conservatively estimates that it will cost $8.4 million to design and build the proposed street. This estimate is based on a conceptual design and includes a 40% contingency. Building the proposed street would not require business relocation. Some right-of-way acquisition would be needed, mostly on the north side, including the purchase of the awning of Northwest College. No other buildings would be impacted. Property owners are aware and supportive of potential acquisitions. The city would follow standard process established by federal and state laws to acquire pieces of adjacent properties with project funds through negotiation based on fair market value. The team will finalize a plan to mitigate construction impacts in parallel with design and right-of-way acquisition work. We've had discussions with business and property owners between Watson and Hall about ways to limit construction impacts. These would continue as we move forward. This is a model for how we would work with businesses on such projects downtown. The project team invited community members that participated in the planning process to review the revised concept plan and provide feedback. You can see a summary of what we heard from the 15 respondents in the agenda bill. Here are the questions that we have for you. Does council support the revised concept plan for improving Milliken from Watson to Hall? Would the council like additional information from the team to address any remaining concerns? If council does support the revised concept plan, it would be helpful if you could provide us direction by making a motion to direct staff to incorporate the revised concept plan into a resolution for council adoption at a future meeting. If this is the case, the team would plan on seeking its adoption by consent agenda on June 17. Design and right-of-way acquisition activities could begin, uh, by late summer and construction would be expected by 2027. Thank you for listening, uh, and I would love to hear your comments and questions, please.
All right, Counselor Teeter, I know other people are putting their name in the thing here, but in order to get you going, what, you want to kick us off?
I'm actually doing pretty good on time right now, so I'll wait and let Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg start us off.
I never did anything nice for you. Uh, Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg.
Thank you. Um, thank you, Dan. Well, in your, like, last two sentences, you answered two of my questions, but, uh, one of them I did just want to confirm. For the right-of-way acquisition process, you said that would start in the fall?
Right-of-way acquisition, uh, we need to know exactly the dimensions of what we would, we'd need, and for that, we need a 60% design. The design work would begin late fall and likely be at the 60%, maybe six or so months after that. So that puts it about February or March next year that we could start the right-of-way acquisition process.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, you, um, for when you said we, we think we'll start construction in 2027, is that like the start of the year? Do we have an idea of when in 2027?
Yeah, that's a good question. Uh, our goal is to, uh, do as much as we can to have this construction occur in one construction season. So that would be, say, March to October of 2027. The advantage to that, as well as that putting out the bid in the winter is, uh, the best time in terms of getting good competition, good, healthy competition. And then it also gives us some time to react if there aren't enough bids. But that would be what we would aim for, uh, work beginning March 2027. And according to the timeframes we have, uh, that is very realistic.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, um, I have a question about MSTIP funds. Um, do, can MSTIP funds be used to help with the right-of-way acquisition costs?
Uh, yeah, so I'll give you an answer, and then I'll ask, uh, our city attorney to follow up, if she would like. Uh, the, providing, uh, providing, uh, business costs or, uh, uh, giving, for example, Thornton Coffee, uh, funding to offset their business losses because of the project. It's not a legal requirement, so it would not be appropriate to use the MSTIP funding for that. Uh, it could be something that the city could decide at a policy level. Uh, they'd likely have to use general funds. Uh, but if that's something that we would do, I, and I think the city attorney as well, would very much look at this. This isn't a one-off for one project. We'd really need to have a policy behind this. Uh, otherwise, this would be a big risk and an unknown for not just project, not just transportation projects or other projects the city would do. Megan, would you like to add anything to that?
Yes, thank you. Um, Counselor Hartmeyer-Prigg, to get right to the question about acquisition in particular, yes. MSTIP funds can be used for the acquisition of the property. And by that, that's the process of acquisition, as well as payment for any permanent or temporary construction easements that would be required to facilitate the construction of the project.
Okay. And to the other part that Dan was talking about, uh, that was the other part of my question. And I'm curious, can MSTIP funds be used for something like that? Fully understanding that we would need a policy, right? There should be some sort of council policy around, like, disruption of business, right? But when there's council, or not council, when there's city, you know, projects that disrupt our small businesses, our local businesses, um, say there, you know, there's a policy that does not exist now around that. Should there be a policy? Are MSTIP funds eligible to use, be used for that type of business disruption? Or can they only be towards like the direct project costs?
So my, my instinct is that no, we could not use N-MSTIP costs for that reason because it's not legally required and it's not an anticipated cost of the design, the construction, or the management of the construction project. So it would be outside. It would be something additional that the city's not obligated to do that would be choosing to do. And therefore, it's likely it would need to find another funding source outside of the MSTIP to be able to, to fund that type of a policy.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last question, I think, goes back to Dan. Um, so the, in the diagram, it shows that we would need, or and in the, in the agenda bill, it talked about needing the drive-through portion of the beauty school building as part of like what would be required for the acquisition. And I, and maybe it's too soon to answer this, but does that, can that be removed safely from the building?
Uh, yes, Counselor. I apologize. I think I answered one question ahead. The last answer I had, I wasn't listening super well.
No, it's okay. They were, they were in one bullet of what I said. All good.
It was coming. Uh, yeah. So your question about the drive-through, uh, the information that I've gotten, uh, from our consultant, uh, who's, uh, works in construction is that there's no indication that that would not be very realistic to do, meaning taking the awning down without impacting, uh, the rest of the building. And, and Counselor, I do want to add something with respect to the, uh, to the business losses and the policy. Uh, you know, this is, you know, there needs to, there would need to be a policy. This is also, this also would be an ongoing cost. But, you know, our strategy at this point has really been to, to do everything possible, beginning a while back and through the rest of the work to, to make sure that, uh, you know, the best outcome happens, which is that the, the loss of business is minimal. And I believe that we have a good control over that.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Um, that concludes my questions. Thank you. Um, my, my comment is, um, in response to your questions, I would support, I'm, I'm really happy to see the change. I know that it's been a long journey. We've heard so much from the community around it, and we need, I think this finds the balance of, um, if you build it, they will come and, and like really meeting the project needs for where, like, what our community needs it to be, right? I think that we, um, it just really is responsive. So thank you. Thank you for going back. I know that we asked you to do additional work. And, um, you know, I think Mr. Francis's comments are just a really strong commendation for you, Dan, and your project team and how you've, you've handled this phase. Um, and, and the way you've engaged the whole time with them. But I just want to thank you for it because I know it's hard, um, to have us do a, a U-turn like that. Um, and I really think it was the best choice for where we're at, and also the most fiscally responsible choice to keep the project within the funding constraints that we had. So, um, you answered my questions. That would make me comfortable to move forward with the consent agenda item in June, and I'm, I'm in support of the revised plan.
Thank you, Counselor. And I just want to say, I, I appreciated the clear direction.
Counselor Tivnan.
Thank you. One of the realities of becoming a city counselor is that you pick up the ball where other counselors left it off. And a lot of times, you're coming in to a stream where something got started a long time before you joined. And in most cases, I, I err on the side of this is already very far down the road. Maybe even if I thought of things a little differently, it, it's, it's just a little too late to, to really come in and start injecting an, an opinion into something that has been fully fleshed out and is very, very far along in the process. This was one of those exceptions where it was very far along, and there was funding attached to it. It was very deep into planning, but there had just been so many changes across the board, from what we're hearing from stakeholders to what we were thinking of in terms of our own collective vision for this area, to the costs, to, uh, other considerations as well. And i- it's not easy turning a ship around or turning it even a few degrees, um, at, at, at where we were at that stage in the game. And I think that it, it was a big ask of city staff. Um, it was also, uh, absolutely necessary to do it. And, um, I just am so pleased to see that we were able to do that in a way where I think some relationships were mended along the way, some trust was earned back. And it's a reflection to the community of us looking at these dollars, scrutinizing them, and making sure that we are, we are going to be using them as wisely as possible because the costs associated with the former project, um, would have gotten, would have gotten us sideways of that. And, uh, I, I couldn't, I, I, I couldn't have asked for more in terms of the, the response and the rapid response to this and turning this back around and into something that it's going to make things safer for people traveling, whether they're on foot, on a bike, in a car, um, or, or, uh, some other alternative I didn't name. And it's also laying the groundwork for future development in that area. And I think it checks the boxes of, of the spirit of what this project is all about. Thank you, Dan, for your leadership and to the other city staff. And thank you to the property owners, business owners, others that have come out to give their thoughts on this. It's all helped inform these conversations that we've had on this. And, um, proud to be a part of this team and, and very, very especially proud of this project.
Thank you, Counselor, for the kind words.
Counselor Teeter.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Dan. Um, I'll start with some things that are very exciting for me. Uh, Counselor Tivnan just mentioned some of it, too. Just changing direction is really hard. This is something I struggled with since before I was running for office. Um, and I don't like changing directions, directions so, in such a major way either, but I do feel like it was needed. Um, I love how this project stays within our budget, within our MSTIP funds. Um, I really appreciate how it's been scaled down. There's not a continuous median turn lane. The intersections are relatively narrow. Uh, neighbors support the design concept overall. Um, the bike paths are, are at least buffered and somewhat protected. Um, and then the, the rapid rectangular flashing beacons at the intersections, I think, would be great for pedestrian safety. Uh, there's street trees. There's a lot that I really like about this. And so, um, I, I could see myself approving this in a consent agenda. Uh, I do have a couple of questions before feeling 100% comfortable. You said construction timeline is six to eight months between March to October. Um, is that day work? Is it night work? Or is it day and night work? Uh, would day and night work make it go faster? Like, what, can you talk more about how that would look like, what that would look like?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. Uh, that, that is a rough estimate. Uh, and my, my understanding is that would be just, uh, working just day work. Uh, looking at night work is something that we could look into. Certainly, weekend work as well. Uh, there's a cost associated with that. Uh, maybe, Peter, are you on? Could you, this isn't something that we discussed before, but you know, you're, you and your firm have a lot of experience in these type of projects. You know, what, what would you give us a few comments with respect to potentially, you know, using night work?
Yeah, so like Dan said, the, the main idea is that this is a
Yeah. So like Dan said, the, the main idea is that this is a one season project and we do everything we can to, to make that be true. That assumes day work. We could have targeted use of night and weekend work, which would be allowed for in the contract documents. Um, I would, I think based on the conversations we've had so far, that weekend work is probably the most helpful to like stretching the amount of, you know, improving the productivity in that one season as opposed to night work. Night work tends to introduce a lot of problems for the contractor where they have to change their, um, schedules and just the way they work with the unions.
Thank you.
To answer your question there.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Um, I would be interested in that as we move further down the road. I'm very happy that it would just be a one season construction timeline. But also March through October are when businesses in downtown make, make their money. Uh, so it would still be incredibly challenging. Like I've got a lot of empathy and support for, for Thornton, for, for their pain that they'd be feeling there. So if there's ways that we can speed it up, I'd be interested in looking at that. I've got one other question. It's about, we're in the conceptual design phase, but as we move more into design, this will be handed off to Public Works, right? Is that right, Dan?
Yeah. So we've already been working, we've already been, yes, ultimately at some point during the design, there'll be a transition. It's kind of like one of those triangle upon triangle wedges. I will stay involved, but Paul Chu, who unfortunately couldn't make it tonight, uh, who was with Public Works, uh, he would take over sort of the lead, uh, project management. But we would definitely overlap and I would be involved likely having to do with the, working with the businesses and the right of way acquisition piece.
Okay. Okay. So then my one design concern is that the location of the flex zones, the parking or street seats or, uh, bike infrastructure, uh, bike racks, whatever be put in those flex zones is on the outside edge of the bike lane. And so, uh, there could be cars idling there in the bike lane. There could be doors opening up. It's not the safest design for, uh, people traveling on bike and it's not 100% protected throughout that street. So if it's something to be worked out in the design phase of like seeing how there can be more protection there or how those can be flipped, that would, uh, make me very happy, but there's been so much progress in this, this design so far. That's why I say I'd probably be comfortable approving this if it comes before us unchanged. I just, I would love to see what that, that would look like.
Thank you, counselor. And we have been working ahead on a good amount of these things. Uh, you know, your question about the arrangement of the bike lanes and the parking. Uh, you know, the project team who includes Kara Hall and, and Jabr Akasho from the traffic, uh, the traffic team and Public Works, uh, we feel that for the, for the design speed and the projected volume, remember, we're not going to be connecting Milliken to Lombard, uh, that this is very safe and comfortable for most, uh, bike riders. Uh, switching the lanes would make the street a little wider in terms of the buffers that you would need and a little more complex in terms of maintaining visibility of cyclists at the driveways. Kara, could you, do you want to add something to that? I know you've done a lot of thinking about this.
Yeah, I can just add that I think some of that is to be determined as we move through the design phase as well. Um, ultimately how that flex zone gets used is going to be a big contributing factor to how we need to sign it, how we need to stripe it and what, um, what types of protection we need to be looking at. So if it's purely used for car parking, um, that's a little different scenario than if it's loading, unloading, um, bike parking, things like that. So all things that we'll be considering as we move through the design process.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And the flex zones, I think can also be used for store water infrastructure, uh, retention basins, things like that. Um, thank you all. That's helpful.
Counselor Duggar.
Thanks, Mayor. Dan, we put a lot, uh, on your plate recently, right? We gave you feedback to change course on the scope of the project. To stay within a tight cost framework, uh, to successfully engage community and then, and then reengage with adjacent landowners and businesses. And I think the overwhelming consensus is you did. So well done and thank you for that. I think we can learn a lot as an organization and as a government from this particular project on, unlike pivoting and working, working with those folks, right? I think the design, I don't have a lot of feedback. I think it's beautiful and I think it'll serve the city well and it will no doubt make this city safer. Um, I think my concern is primarily around construction. I, I think, I think there might be some creative solutions though, or other avenues unintended, uh, if you will, for us to work on that. I, I, I'm thinking especially for my colleagues, maybe this is a bureau conversation around that adjacent or, uh, the lot between Canyon and Milliken. Maybe that can be repurposed as a temporary parking solution during construction. Right? Like I think, I think we have some options here to think about because I think what the Thornton family has brought to us is, is legitimate. Uh, I, I don't know what options we have, but that is on my mind, like figuring out some of those that, that can be a conversation uh, in the future at Bureau. But I, I do think we have some opportunities there to be creative, um, to, to, to kind of, and maybe even template some of those uh, potential future partnership solutions there. Um, otherwise I'm, I'm, I would support this on a consent agenda. I think it, that it, you know, you heard loud and clear what we said, you delivered it and I'm, I'm very happy to support this. Thank you for the work.
Thank you, counselor. And yeah, the experience that we've had throughout, uh, among other things, uh, working between CDD and Public Works, uh, is I think a good model for these other projects as we hand this off. Uh, you know, there's a lot of, we've had a lot of discussions, uh, with Thornton Coffee and Brett as well. Uh, you know, it's, it's hard to burden an agenda bill with a lot of details, but certainly we've had conversations about ways that we can maintain public parking near where their facility is. For example, you know, looking into having one of the lanes of Hall be used as parking temporarily, uh, which is a good location. It isn't to say that's what we're going to do, but to give you an example. Uh, and then the other, uh, in, in terms of the impacts, uh, on his property and particularly the access for customers. There are ways that the product, the, the construction can be sequenced in a way that, uh, you know, the, the work is done in other parts of the street, which don't have another Thornton's coffee in front of them, uh, until very end in the process. Uh, this is, is, is quite likely that it can be done this way. Uh, that would, uh, you know, limit that. So uh, there, there is a good amount of flexibility and I would agree that there's still opportunities for the city in one way or another to be creative. Uh, you know, I spoke earlier about, you know, one way that we really are hamstringing in terms of, you know, being able to, to provide direct funding uh, for one thing or another to a business. It isn't to say we couldn't, but it's a larger policy question. But I think independent of that, I think there's a lot of things that we can do to, uh, to keep the business loss or revenue loss from even happening.
Yeah. No, I think that's the key. And I think that, that, that is the easiest solution and the, the best path forward to me is to listen to our partners to understand what issues they're bringing to us and like try and solve those and just instead of just, you know, throwing money at it or whatever, like, like if parking's an issue, let's see what we can do. Uh, I, I love your creative ideas on Hall and, and others, and I look forward to, to kind of developing the best one there, but uh, great work on this. I really appreciate that.
Thank you, counselor.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes, uh, thank you so much for the presentation. I'll try to keep my comments brief. Uh, I was thinking of what Counselor Tivnan was saying, which is like we walk into a lot of things that were before us and we're inheriting those projects and trying to move and how complicated that can be. And I think staff has shown just such an extraordinary way to pivot to not just the needs of this council, but the needs to what we're hearing from our businesses. So super kudos to Dan and staff who've been working on this. I think, um, also just listening to Counselor Duggar's comments about just like all the pretend that I've given you all the praise without having to repeat it again. So hold on to that praise. Um, I, I do want to make sure that, you know, and I think it's already been said, but just to elevate small business concerns, right? Um, I, uh, my family has run small businesses throughout my life. I, you know, got to work in small businesses throughout my entire life. And so what does it look like for us to partner in a way that ensures we're not causing immediate harm or, or major harm to small business? And so whether that's partnerships with our economic development staff to ensure that, you know, folks can, can get their coffee if they need their coffee amongst other businesses. So just sort of nodding my support towards making sure that not necessarily that we can just make businesses whole again, but that we are partnering with them in a way. And I do want to say, I know a couple of years ago, I think part of some of the trust came from previous construction projects and not necessarily the best communication around ensuring business owners knew that those were coming and the timing of that coming. And so really encouraging us to say, we're going to do our best to, to communicate as much and as often as possible to make sure that the impact on our businesses is as minimal as possible. And if it means that, um, Dan and the city is buying coffee, uh, to, to try to make sure we're helping on our business. I'm not saying to do that. I'm just, um, you know, reminding us that we also have a way to support local businesses, whatever that looks like. So thank you, Dan, for the presentation and look forward to that.
Thank you, counselor. I do want to say, uh, thank you all for the kind words. I, I have to say that this is a large team uh, that is working on this project. Many people in development, economic development, planning in public works and traffic, transportation operations, uh, the legal team here at the city. So we just have a, a lot of very nice and capable people that I can count on to, to really help me do this work. So it's very little me, it's more the team.
I, I appreciate that, Dan, and I think we all recognize that, but you're the one we've been yelling at in public about this. So as much as they're helping you behind the scenes, they're not taking the public backlash that you are. And I just want to second Counselor Hassan's point that Dan is rich and will buy us all coffee. Uh, Counselor Kimmy.
Thank you, Dan. Um, I remember three years ago when I was running the city council for the first time. I guess I was, you know, walking by his house and he came out and greeted me by blowing off the leaves. So, um, I have one question. Yeah. Um, on the hall and Milliken, the other side, um, the sidewalk is smaller than other, um, crosswalks that we have. Is there a reason why this is not expanded?
Are you, counselor, are you talking about, are you talking about, let me see if I can share my screen.
Milliken, the other side.
Oh, but yeah, but by the, uh, hold on, let me share here. Uh, let me see. Uh, are you talking about here by Thornton Coffee?
On the other, other side of the street.
I think Danny's talking about the northwest corner at Watson.
Uh, oh, at Watson. Uh,
No, Hall.
Oh, Hall, sorry.
No, that.
Oh, by Damaro, by Damaro Ford.
Oh, I, I see that corner. Um, yeah, I, I mean, that's, that's certainly, I don't know, Peter. I, I mean, I think what we're trying to do, certainly on the other corner there by, uh, you know, where, where Carterian Travel is, is we're, we're keeping the right of way where it is and working within that constraint that was given to us. I, I think there is more flexibility on the corner with Damaro, but do you remember, Peter, what the width of that, with that corner is?
Yeah, those sidewalks are drawn in at sort of like what is the narrowest sidewalk that would meet design standards in order to try to minimize impacts to those other properties that are outside of this main block of the project. But I agree with you that it warrants a closer look to try to make that a more comfortable corner.
Yeah, so, yeah, at least for the ones that we work on, um, you know, the crosswalk or the, I, the, it should be consistent. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Uh, yeah. And design wise, I hope it looks similar because otherwise Watson and Milliken, they got wide, you know, corners, uh, but the other side, you know, they don't get the love from the other side of the street. So that's, that was my, um, comment or question. Hopefully we can look at that if possible. Um,
That can be looked at during design, yes.
Yes. Well, otherwise I'm supportive of, um, um, everything. I think I could approve it. Uh, but if you, if you, if you could come back with that design review, if possible, before that happened, before we do a consent for that, that'll be great for me. But thank you for all your team. Thank you.
Yeah, counselor, I, I think that would be one that we'd have to look at, we'd have to look at during, uh, during the design and it's certain something we can look at.
All right. Thank you.
I think the design is great. I think when we take contact, uh, sensitive design criteria where we look at each part of the road a little bit in its own capacity. I utilize the sidewalks a lot. Not only do I run, I cycle, I, I walk with my kids, I use our trails. It's, I prefer our sidewalks when they're 10 feet wide. I can walk with my stroller next to my husband. But as we were walking on shoals today, it's not at six feet. And you know, there are times where we have to kind of adjust and do that. So um, this road in particular, um, because of all of the right of way acquisition, I understand why we're kind of making maybe some of these sidewalks less. I have some feedback when we get into the design phase, but I don't, like, I don't have any issue with where we are tonight. So I'll save that when we get into the design phase of it. I will say though, this project has been a long time of the city and, and the way that we got funding, but I think where we kind of went off kilter was based on council direction around our, our complete streets. And it, it is a, it is another example of our direction and decision-making and the outcome of it. And we faced this with the loop as well. The, the loop ballooned up to an astronomical amount under the complete streets. And now we're reining it back in as we're finding, we're not able to do the things that we wanted to do. Um, because on paper, complete streets is awesome. In practicality with limited funding, it is hard for us to do that. It's also hard for us to do it when it's a side, a street to, that's going to go in first ahead of everything else. And so I think as the council, we have to remind ourselves sometimes that like these, these policies that we want to accomplish. Sometimes we have to ask ourselves, do we have the funding to make this happen? And there'll be times when we do, but this is a time where we couldn't do what we were really would hopeful to do there. And around the complete street itself, and if we took all of the, the, the feedback from our property owners and just looked at it in that isolation, when we add in the feedback from the property owners, um, we really owe it to them to kind of adjust where we are. And I, and I would say we've done a lot of um, giving credit to Dan and his team, but I would also say that Counselor Tivnan was really the kind of first city counselor that jumped in and met with people and, you know, called me and said, you know, I think you got it wrong here and let me give you some examples. And I, I'd really love for you to go, to go and talk to these people. And so, you know, this is a great example of sometimes where the city council sees things that other people don't. And, and this time it was Counselor Tivnan that really encouraged us, not in an illegal public meeting kind of way, but a like, hey, go ask information for yourself. And I, and I think you're, you're, you're kind of stuck on a point right now and I'd like you to look beyond that. And we have to kind of do that with each other sometimes, particularly me, because I have the long history and the bias with the projects and all the input. And there's a lot of times we can't change direction based on projects because of funding and because of how much work has got into it. This is a perfect example of like where we could. There will be opportunities where we can adjust in the future. And I want us to be able to celebrate these wins when we can. Um, but I don't want it, I don't want this to be an all the time habit, but I think there's a lot of kudos for the team, for Counselor Tivnan, for the council being adjusted and then kind of living out our values. Um, and I think we're going to end up with a really great project on budget and it's loop adjacent. It fits into what we're doing with the loop and it's going to, um, really elevate downtown. My last point is with Counselor Duggar and parking. I know that staff hate when we make temporary parking, but we love to do it for ourselves. We did it outside city hall. So I want us to try really hard to find a solution for parking. We're going through this on Broadway too. Like we got to get out of our own way sometimes and help businesses thrive in this environment. And we can't just say arbitrarily no. So, uh, I don't know if his suggestion is the right one, and that's probably a bureau discussion, not a council discussion. But staff, be flexible, find this man some parking. We can do two things at the same time and the government is capable of building. Let this be a project where we demonstrate we are capable of building. All right. Dan, you got all the feedback?
Yes, thank you.
And virtual hugs you needed today?
Well, I want to say first with the parking, you know, this, the construct, with the construction sequencing, meaning different parts of the street done at different times. Looking at the parking on Hall and then looking at the parking on the other side of Hall, there's, there's a good amount of flexibility with that. So just wanted to add that. And, uh, yes, uh, I, I, I think Megan would remind me to say it would be ideal if there's a motion made, if possible. If possible.
I think that's what, is that what you're chiming in for, Council Hartmeyer Prig?
Yes, it is.
All right, go ahead.
Uh, I move to direct staff to incorporate the revised Milliken Way concept plan into a resolution for council adoption at a future meeting.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Duggar. Any more discussion on tonight's motion? All right. Seeing done. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Uh, seven yes, zero no.
Okay, thank you for that. Um. Right, we are on to the last bit here, uh. Council new business and I have a couple of items, so I'm going to jump in first tonight. Um, one, the Oregon Ethics Commission, um. Put out an opinion from LOC last week that mentions the city of Beaverton in it. It set a firestorm off on Friday. It is about food. Uh, they used our memo for the, the council, um. Uh, our opinion asking about the food for the council team building exercise. LOC used that as an argument to have a much broader conversation around food. It is the opinion of the Ethics Commission that we cannot provide food to elected officials. Um, I have been in a, many of the meetings today with LOC, with other mayors talking about this. I, I will send, I will have staff send out the council memo. I know the city attorney's office and GR have also been talking about this because the Ethics Commission. Wants food to be considered part of compensation, but as the council knows intimately. Uh, we can't change compensation until people stand for election. It has IRS implications. And, um, then we have the whole thing about voting for our own compensation. So LOC is having conversations with the governor. LOC is, um, convening mayors to talk about what's next. We generally think this is going to take a legislative fix, that the Ethics Commission is. Maybe interpreting state law in a way that it wasn't intended, which we know intent has a lot to do with what the legislature passed and the rules that come out from it. So I just, I want you to be aware, there's a hypersensitivity right now around food and not like eating in restaurants. I'm talking about like providing a meal at a council retreat or providing a meal, um, at some of our boarding commission meetings. So I will send that to you guys, um, because I think it is going to start filtering out. And because the city of Beaverton is, is named in the, the very long report and how we're doing that. Um, secondly, we had some testimony about the 125th extension tonight. And as somebody, if you guys remember, for those of you that are old enough, when we hired the city manager, that we each got to take the city manager on a driving tour. Of things that we thought were cool about Beaverton and that needed to be fixed. Like I drove Jenny to the 125th extension and said. We got to do something with this. And there's actually three roads that are like that in the city of Beaverton. 125th is probably the most noticeable one. There's one off of Hart as well and another road that like would be in a future plan of road, but we're not. We're not building. The 125th one tends to get the most controversy. And if you look at the, the sign on the 125th extension, it has seven numbers. It doesn't even have an area code. That's how long that, that sign has been out there. Um, and it's the old two times ago city logo. I would love for us to have a conversation about that. I have thought for a long time, it could be a Habitat for Humanity build project with small cluster homes. It could be a deal with THPRD for them to make it a path. But what I don't think we're ever going to have the money to do is make it a road, nor would we want to make a, you know, we'd have to really think about a road. What that neighborhood would look like and the punch through. Um, so I, I would like the, for us to tell the staff to come back and let us, you know. At least what is the path to get out of the transportation plan? And then, you know, as we're dreaming, as one does, what could that property be? Counselor Hartmeyer Prig?
Thank you, Mayor Beatty. Um, is that property city owned?
Correct, it is.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to clarify.
Counselor Teeter.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. I would definitely support the sort of conversation, um. Or whenever the city manager feels like it fits within our, our work plan. Uh, but I do think it's an important conversation. I remember. Last year, Counselor Duggar and I were reading, were leading a group bicycle ride that crossed over from that trail because it's a great neighborhood. A connector for the neigh, for the neighborhoods in that, uh, in that neck. Um, and there's a lot of interest in that being a future trail area. So I don't know if it's. Uh, something we could use Metro Park's bond funding. I think that's what was mentioned, testimony tonight. Um, or THPRD would be interested in partnership, but I would love to have this conversation to see how we can move it forward. Cause I think there, there's a lot of opportunity here for something that's already a hidden gem in Beaverton, but could be. Even more valuable for, for the neighbors there. So I love this. I would be very excited about it.
Or a safer gym because people use it right now in an illegal way. Um, THPRD is very interested. I've, I've had many conversations with them. But I would say, how are we going to use it to get two wins? Like if THPRD, I live on the corner of 155th and Sexton Mountain. And we sold them that property because it was supposed to be a trail like eight years ago. And I just saw that they constructed a fence around it. So clearly not going to be a trail. So I just want to make sure anything we do with them. Comes out in fruition. So Dan, if you could, you know, uh, while Jenny's gone, quickly add this to a future agenda for us to talk about. That would be awesome. I'm just kidding. Talk to your boss about it, but we'd love to have the future conversation about it. Okay. And I do think we have one more thing for a new business. Maybe Counselor Hartmeyer Prig has a motion for us.
Or I can do that. Um, I do, can I ask a clarifying question of city attorney?
Yes.
Uh, I, do I need to read the or part? Like I read the whole thing?
I think you cut. Well, I guess.
I can choose one. That's what I'm trying to decide. Is this one?
They just choose one?
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, then yes, Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to serve a notice of non-renewal. Of the second amended and restated heating and cooling services agreement dated June 29th, or June 2009. On the appropriate parties before June 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Well, it's Counselor Hassan's second move by, uh, Counselor Hartmeyer Prig. Any discussion on tonight's motion?
Uh, yeah, Mayor, I got a point of clarification. Uh, maybe it's us chiming in. Sorry.
Yeah, clarification is that, um, it, it's your option, but you can actually authorize the city manager to do two things. Um, and, um, it, it, it's up to you whether you want to stick with one or have two as an, as an option. So just so that you understand.
I think it's a one that we wanted. Yeah. So if we could move that one.
Yeah, the motion I made.
Yeah. All right. Is that the clarification you needed, Counselor Teeter?
Yep, just want to make sure I understood the motion.
All right. With that, will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yep.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prig.
Yes.
Counselor Hassan.
Yes.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yes.
Counselor Teeter.
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan.
Yes.
Mayor Beatty.
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no.
All right. We're done. See everyone next week.